Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and ask for approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the road vacation of Eagle City. Taylor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. I mean, if people have been here in the past, Old Eagle City, on 160th, east of the Iowa River, it was one time gonna be a city, never happened. So, one owner currently owns all of the city plat, so he just wants us to vacate the road that goes down the middle of it.
Okay. Any other public comment on the road vacation of Eagle City? And the property owner is not present, correct?
Don't see him, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I think we should probably wait till 10:05 before we get out of this.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, alright, so, we'll be here in a holding pattern momentarily.
You want to talk about it again?
No.
Explain all the plots that were out there.
There's maybe 12 of them. I don't know, one time it doesn't mean a big deal.
And he owns the plots, just not the streets to the plots.
Correct. Yep.
Goes right down through the middle.
Yeah.
If anybody would like to see it, they can go out and take a look at some other real estate that's for sale in the area. The Eagle City Winery is for sale.
Maybe he'll buy that, too.
Yeah. Terry's Port.
Terry's Port.
There you go.
Bruce did make this, so it's a also your claim deed as well. Do you even realize that?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Nancy helped us out on that one.
Michelle, eager to get it back on the tax roll?
What's that?
E- eager to get it back on the tax roll?
Sure, it'll add a lot of value.
Yeah. Let's watch those rural tax dollars jump next year. Well, a couple years.
Like Garden City, Garden City Alleyway, I mean, I'm sure that big jump.
Alright, we will go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, we have is item number five, is a resolution approving the road vacation in Eagle City.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the road vacation in Eagle City.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Roll call, Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item we have is item number six, is a resolution for bridge weight limit postings. Taylor?
Yep, so, every year our bridges get inspected, every bridge has been inspected at least every other year. So, this is our new list of the weight limit signs that we need to put up. Some of them were taken down, so that's always good, too. We had two bridges that we needed to close, I believe. And I guess three, one is a driveway, one that's not used anymore because they built them a new one, so we'll just remove that. If anyone has any specific questions about any of the bridges, we have all the files at our office and we can explain why they're getting those limits put on. Generally, if you see that, it means it won't be long before the bridge will either be closed or replaced, which is kind of the way life works.
Another 10 years.
Maybe.
I have a question about the load postings, the tons. What does it mean when it has three different?
So...
Fifteen, twenty, or twenty?
Usually those signs will have a picture, it's in three, one, two, and three. So, like, the first one is like a single unit truck, like maybe like a U-Haul.
Okay.
And like, the third one is, you know, more like a semi tractor trailer.
Okay, that's what I wondered. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the resolution for bridge weight limit postings.
I'll second it.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven, utility prevents and secondary roads updates.
No utility permits. We're currently, well, you saw, you lived on one of the highways, we're doing our crack ceiling right now, so now they're north of New Providence, between that and Highway 175. So, it's summertime, so you'll see lots of action now.
Four tens, back on four tens.
Correct, we're back on four tens.
And I understand that there's some pretty delightful entertainment if you go through the construction zones.
That's one of the figures, he's notorious for being pretty entertaining.
Really?
Yeah, upbeat, yeah, so...
He's a happy guy.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that.
Where is this?
S-55.
S-55 between New Providence, 175. You'll know him when you see him. He'll be out there dancing and just having a good time.
Yeah. I'm just glad that happy...
He ought to be happy at work and he pulls it off pretty good.
Yep.
Nice.
Okay, we'll go on to item number eight, public comment. Yes, Ms. Dunn?
On Monday, there apparently was a school safety roundtable up in Ackley's somewhere.
Yes.
I was unable to attend, and so, we had supervisors, supervisors attending, and I'm curious, was that just concerning Ackley's schools? Was that a countywide thing? Were there school administrators or teachers who were working? Could someone give a, just a brief review or synopsis of topics and what was...
I'll let Julie Towne, Administrator of Greenbelt Home Care, discuss that.
Julie?
Or Dave.
Sure. I believe the meeting was just like an invitation only for a lot of the stakeholders to come together, to talk about how we can work with all the schools throughout the county, with the media, with public health, with the supervisors, in regards to preparedness efforts, emergency preparedness efforts. So, the superintendents from the school districts were there, I think Self-Hardens was the only one that was not present at the time. We talked about future financial needs, that they would need to put preparedness efforts in, possibilities of using other public health in regards to certain areas, and putting us into their plans. Law enforcement, talking about what their roles would be in the event of coming in to a facility in case there was an active shooter, how that would go down. And just so that we could start talking and know what our resources are throughout the whole county.
Invitation only to stakeholders. I'm the taxpayer, I'm grandparent, I am a stakeholder. I have grandchildren in schools.
Oh, I agree.
And so, I too am a stakeholder, and I don't, I don't, invitation only, that's just fine, but you know what? Parents, grandparents, they want to be in at the beginning, and not just be given a couple of options, they want their input into the beginning talks about that topic.
Let me clarify something, I guess I said stakeholders, though. I just want to clarify what I said, policymakers would be a better word.
And you know what? As a citizen, we too should have input into making policy. And when I have a grandchild that talks to me about school shootings, and she brought it up, not me, then I am a stakeholder, I need to be involved. When that child is frightened, and has to be reassured by their teacher, and she talks to grandma about it, and she brings it up, you bet, I'm a stakeholder, I want to be in on it.
Absolutely.
I want to be in on those.
And there's a chain of command to follow, Julie, and you should absolutely follow that. And what we did is we started with the top, and those will be diverse, you know, trickle down, dispense down.
I want to be, I want to be invited as a stakeholder, and I don't want that stuff to just trickle down on you. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it, but as a stakeholder, invitation only, I want to be invited as well, thank you.
Other public comment. Hearing none, I'll move to item number nine, approval of minutes from April 18th and April 25th.
I'll make motion to approve the April 18th and April 25th board meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 10, approval of claims for payment, April 25th and May 2nd, 2018.
I'll move to approve the claims for payment, April 25th and May 2nd of 2018.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 11, is a federal aid agreement with the Iowa DOT and the Iowa River Trail Group. Chris, I'll go ahead and yield the floor to you, sir.
Alright, the federal aid agreement with the Iowa DOT will be, that will be on a future agenda. There were some requirements there that we didn't receive back from the DOT, but just from an update standpoint, this is in regards to our 2016 Federal Rec Trail Grant that Harding County did receive. This grant was to help complete the construction of bridges 19 through 25 and one culvert. That is, and then, for $247,000 with a match of $72,500. Our board did go through the process of selecting an engineer, and we have selected Snyder and Associates, but then, the processing through Iowa DOT will, is being handled through Marty Wymer at Region 6, so then we'll have that resolution coming up in the next, I would say, 30 to 60 days for approval. The RFQ that they did approve, or that we have selected them for, did include three other bridges, which were the, are the three bridges in between Gifford and Union, as far as part of their evaluation and design process for either parts to be added to the Federal Rec Trail project, or to be added at a later date, but at least we'll have that work completed. So, that's my update on that side of things. If you have any other questions there?
Were you gonna comment on your event on May 9?
That is true, there's an Iowa River Trail update.
Okay.
That'll handle all that out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Chris. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve the federal aid agreement with Iowa DOT.
That will be, yeah, I will be present. That'll be at the next meeting, or the meeting after.
The finalized...
The finalized version.
Okay.
Based on schedule, this was my, the only date I could come to present this. So, we were hoping to have it, but we do not today, so...
Item number 12 would be the approval of the new board members of the Iowa River Trail. Chris, I'll go ahead and let you introduce your candidates.
Sure. The Iowa River Trail, with Harding Commission, had two open spots available this, that we were looking to have filled, and we were thankful to fill those this year. Two new board members that were approved by our board and need supervisor approval are Cynthia Knight from Union, Iowa, so we have Union representation, we're extremely pleased, and she's also the mayor of Union, so we're really happy to have her on board. And then Brady Winter here of Eldora, Iowa, and he has his, he has his own business in marketing, and, and, and different media and communications, so he's a great asset as well, just with experience with graphic design and marketing that he's bringing to the table. So, really pleased to have a full board for, for the Iowa River Trail.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll move to approve Cynthia Knight and Brady Winter to the new board members of the Iowa River Trail.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Chris.
Alright, yeah, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. First and foremost, want to start out with our board's condolences on the passing of our county attorney, Rick Dunn. Just from our side of things, Rick was an avid supporter of our project. He was a huge resource for us to get the pieces and foundation in place, and he will truly be missed by our board. And, and I know, and I know how much he cared about the county and his community, and making it a better place, and so, we will, we will be hopeful with the, with new, the new position there, that we'd have that same, same support from the county, so. Next, I wanted to talk about, just, yeah, projects and where we're at, the RFQ, we were hoping to have that done last year. Our project had run into a little bit of a hurdle on the Marshalltown side, as they were going through this same evaluation of some of their bridges, they found that their bridges were in worse shape, and are in need of almost full replacement. So, that tailored back some of their projects, and thankfully, on the Harding County side, our bridges have, are newer and are in better shape, so we think that full replacement should not be necessary on most of them, but that'll be part of that engineering process with this Federal Rec Trail Grant. The Federal Rec Trail Grant will kick off next year as a construction project, so by the end of 2019, if all goes well, we'll have a linear path open most, to the public, from Steamboat Rock up to Gifford. Now, that will not be a paved path, like the current project that was completed, but it'll be in rough form, but we will allow, we was hopeful to open that up. And then, from Gifford to Union, if we're able to complete those three bridges. The only hurdle in our path right now is the South Fork Bridge. That bridge is not usable, and I will make another request to the general public out there, stay off of the South Fork Bridge, there are barriers in place, we have put new barriers out in order to end signage, and we ask that folks respect those, and as we've had barriers taken down in the past as well, and we'll continue to monitor that for county liability purposes, and make sure those are, are in place. But, that, that bridge will need to be removed at some point, and we'll have to, and looking at different possibilities of how do we either cross the South Fork, either at that point or at a different point, so. Funding has gone very well, our fundraising efforts put us in a really great financial position, and so, from the match standpoint, I just want to let the, the public and the supervisors know that we have that match covered currently. We've, our current balance sheet looks at, looks at approximately 200 and, roughly $250,000 between our Harding County account and the account, and, and dollars that Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation is holding for us, too. So, we feel that we're in a very good financial position, but we will be using those dollars to help fund maintenance and construction projects over the next, next few years. So, fundraising efforts won't stop, just because we've done a good job fundraising up to this point. Maintenance, a couple notes there, we have hired Leeward Solutions, I believe the county has two, to evaluate the Iowa River Trail, and so, as far as our maintenance goes this year, that will start in May and June, and we will be holding off on our spraying and mowing, in order to allow that survey to be completed in the best possible manner, and to, to document and record the vegetation that we have out there, not only the weeds and weed control efforts, but then also native prairie species, so we know where we need restoration, and we know where to target for invasives. And, and so, that'll be happening in June, and then we'll have more, more spraying and mowing efforts after that. We'll be coordinating with Megan Dorman and the IRVM, with their expertise, to help take care of a plan in place, and then use our, use our folks that we've had doing our maintenance to coordinate with that plan. So, we also begin prairie restoration in the city of Union, along their corridor, as part of our proposal from last year to them. Grants, we will be submitting some additional grants this year, most likely the Iowa, the Iowa State Rec Trail Grant. That funding, again, is to be seen with the, with the current budget process at, at the state level, that, but, we know that that, the budget is getting tighter, and our, the funding for these type of projects is getting smaller, and that the competition is getting higher, so, that's something just for all of us to keep in mind as we go forward. The project was awarded the National Endowment for the Art Grant that the city of Marshalltown had put in. The city of Marshalltown had, has come forward and, and is matching part of that $25,000 grant with a $5,000 level, that is from the city. On the Harding County side, we're, we plan to match that through our current funds, but this, and this project is going towards visioning, so this will be, to help contract a marketing firm, to help us really coordinate what this project looks as a whole. Our goal is to have users on this trail, if they're in Marshalltown, or Liskom, or Albion, or Union, or Steamboat Rock, or Gifford, or Eldora, know that they're on the Iowa River Trail, and connect the dots on how this coordinates between all those communities and counties. So, that's a, that's a $25,000 grant that'll be matched in full between our entities as well. And finally, we are excited about completing the Steamboat Rock Phase 1A project, and we have a ribbon cutting on May 19th, that's a Saturday, at 11:00 a.m., and we're inviting the public, but all of those that do, have supported this project, including the county supervisors, we, we want to invite you today as well, you should have received an invitation in the mail, but without your support, this project doesn't happen, and we want, this is a big moment to celebrate. It's a one-mile section, connects to the Pine Lake Trail, it gets us over the Iowa River, and if none of you have been down there, go park at the, the boat ramp there at the Iowa River, that's kind of the canoe tube access, you can walk up onto that and take a look at, at how things are, and the future of this project, it's, it's really exciting, so. It's a chicken and the egg, we've got the chicken, and so, we could, folks can see what this is gonna do. And on the side note, I was coming through Eldora on Saturday, and there was about, oh, I didn't get an exact count, but a dozen to 20 bikes out on the, on the sidewalk, and it was the first nice spring day that we've had, and, you know, seeing that, and they're in different groups, and then, they were, they were congregated at Casey's afterwards, and it just got me really excited to think, in a few years, once we get these connections in place, in that first spring day, instead of a few dozen riders, we could have dozens upon dozens upon dozens upon dozens of riders in our communities. Going to restaurants, stopping in at the gift shops, staying at the bed and breakfast in the motels, and what an economic boost that is gonna be for the future of Harding County and these communities, so, we'll keep pushing forward with the project. I'll open it up for questions.
Did a great job explaining a lot of things, and thank you for what you put into it.
Maybe you've already thought about, but have you worked with Trees Forever on the Rails and Trails visionary grants that they have?
Yes, we've applied for, we haven't gone through Trees Forever, but we've, we've worked with Rails to Trails and some of their grant opportunities as well.
Iowa State students that...
Um, I'm not sure about that one, so I may touch base with you on that, so, yep. The Rails to Trails Conservatory has been, yeah, we haven't been successful with those, but, yep, they've been on our radar.
If you have a community that has a railroad that goes through that, the Iowa State students will come in and provide a vision of how that can be beautified, with the trail through, and they provide that grant free, it would just be the match, and help you provide the funding.
Okay.
You just come up with your own funding to make that vision.
Yep. I'll touch base with you on that, be good, thanks.
I appreciate everything you do.
Oh, he does a lot.
Sounds like you're dedicated enough, you're putting a house right up next to it.
Yeah, moving, moving to get, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'll be a quarter mile from the trail, so I'll be able to keep an eye on it now, too, so, yeah, it's, you know, it's a lot of foundation work, and it's a lot of behind the scenes work, and I just want to point out and give thanks to all the, our board is volunteers. These are folks that, that have full-time jobs, and, and then some, and they find the time, because they're, they're dedicated to their communities, and they want to see our communities thrive going forward, and we know the struggles rural communities are having, and we just have such an opportunity, yeah, right in our backyard, to be able to give ourselves a great chance for, for a future here that's successful, so. I hope to see you all at, on May 19th, if you can make it, we'd love to, love to have you there, so.
11:00 a.m.
Yep, at the trailhead there, basically at the Iowa River Bridge is where we'll be holding all that, so.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Next item, I have item number 14, Auditor's Monthly Report.
We'll make a motion to approve the Auditor's Monthly Report for the month of April, the amount of $905 collected.
I will second that.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 15, unfortunately, we have to take action on the county attorney position today, and so, there, we've been advised by the state attorney general's office, and Aaron Heligas from Ayers and Cooney, and, so, we need to make the decision on how to move forward to maintain the continuity of operations in the county attorney's office today. So...
Which, which, how do you want to address this? How we're doing the continuity, or what we're gonna do with the position?
Well, initially, we need to determine if we are going to ask for a special election, make notice of appointment, and if we make notice of appointment, we need to let the public know that within 14 days, you can petition for a special election, which would be 10% of the voters in the last presidential election, which equated to about 700 votes.
Signatures.
Signatures on a petition, so, yeah, so, those are, that's kind of the algorithm, so, as a board of supervisors, those, we would need to, those, those are the options today.
Well, the option I like would be to appoint, the general elections in November, appointment would make the most sense at this time, we don't need to have another special election at this time, I don't feel.
Okay.
Correct. I, I agree.
Okay.
So, if we need to have a motion on that?
Yep.
You want to do that, or do you want me?
Do we need to put a, if we're gonna do an appointment, do we need to put a timeline in?
So, according...
And what dates do we want?
So, the appointment would need to be completed by June 7th, 2018, according to Iowa code.
And there's required notice to be put in the papers.
Correct.
We just need to make sure that that's legally published in the timeframe required, in order to make the appointment by the deadline date.
And then I would like people to come in also, you know, see who wants, who wants the position.
Right, and they would, I believe we spoke yesterday in our meeting, that we would publish notice for the vacancy in, with three organizations, and those would be published immediately with the notice, and then with the requirements from Iowa Code's Section 331, and then they would make application to the county.
Donna has a question, Victor.
Doesn't Harding County have an assistant county attorney?
Correct, they do.
Why not just use him and make it easy?
Well, the Iowa Code specifies that we have to... for the vacancy in, with three organizations, and those would be published immediately with the notice, and then with the requirements from Iowa Code's Section 331. And then they would make application to the county.
Donna has a question.
Doesn't Harding County have an assistant county attorney?
Correct, they do.
Why not just use him and make it easy?
Well, the Iowa Code specifies that we have to either appoint or have a special election, so she is sitting right here.
Him as a her.
Yes, and so-
Why not just choose her until November?
Because we can't.
There's laws that we have to follow in order to fill the position legally.
Right. An appointment or special election, but we have to publish notice that we plan on appointing.
So that people can petition for an election if they want.
Yep. So, yeah, yep. It's, it's a very unique situation, we've learned in the past 72 hours.
And if you wanted more information about the procedure and how it's done, I can certainly provide that to you. I would be interested.
So, I would make a motion to, for the board to take, to follow the proper procedures to post notice that we plan to fill the vacancy by appointment, and that appointment would be required to be filled by June 7th.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion to second, any discussion?
It could be filled before then?
It has, yeah, just as long as it's-
Within 40 days.
Within the 40 days, yep.
And then another discussion, if we choose to make this a full-time position, it cannot be done until now, it could only be done after the election in November.
Correct.
And then it can be contested by, by the winning candidate. They have 60 days to contest, and then the following four-year election, it would go back to a full-time position if it was contested.
Correct. But, yeah, my individual intentions would be to create it, a full-time county attorney position. Attorney Dunn served in a part-time capacity, and going forward, I believe it'd be in Harding County's best interest to have a full-time county attorney. And with that, Iowa Code, if you have a full-time county attorney, they cannot have private practice, so they are completely devoted to the county attorney practices at hand. Yep, yep. So, any further discussion? All right. Nancy, I'll ask for a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item I have is change of status for the county attorney's office.
Kind of a unique situation here, Darrell Meyer, Rick had offered him a position at $65,000 a year. Rick's email is right here. It's 65 is what he offered. I know, I know it says 60.
It's incorrect on there.
But 65 is what he offered by his email, by, by Rick's email. And I would honor that 65,000 that he had offered to that person, so I would make the motion to approve Darrell Meyer, county, assistant county attorney at $65,000 a year, a full-time resident, starting?
May 7th.
Is it May 7th, 2018?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 17, change of status with the Conservation Department.
I will make a motion to approve the hiring of Blaine Becker as a resource intern at $11 an hour, and that will be temporary seasonal part-time as of April 23rd, 2018.
I will second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 18, I have a change of status at the Friendship Club. Lynn, would you like to say anything else, or?
No, it's just, it's just a, as-needed position. Staff that are only part-time, so basically it's fill in when other staff are on leave or we need extra help.
Sure. All right, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Parker Manning as a, as a hiring for temporary seasonal part-time as of May 2nd, 2018. It's, like Lynn said, as needed to assist with Friendship Club when staff are gone, or additional assistance is needed. Position will also include cleaning duties.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Yes, Julie.
On the previous seasonal part-time person, how much, how much would I be, $11?
Yep.
Does this job not rate a higher pay?
Lynn, I'll let you address that.
Think we're getting a bargain? I mean, we talked about it, and, well, he's been a, kind of a volunteer and not gotten paid for a lot of what he's done, so now he's gonna get paid that much. I would look at after, maybe when we do our new budget, or when we do approved salaries for the new fiscal year, you know, I would assume we would hopefully bump that up a little bit, but.
To maybe like $11 an hour? I mean, still, and, I'm just saying.
We have a, we have a part-time staff that's been there many years, who isn't even making $11, so.
Oh, well, maybe they should then. Thank you.
All in favor of approving the change of status, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, item number 19, change of status, IRVM department. Megan, anything to add?
So excited that we're gonna have two more people onboard for this spray season, and also we're gonna get a lot done, and we have a new hydro season, and the sprayer is up to, and, and get all the rain taken off.
I'll move to approve Lillian Keys, an IRVM intern, $11 an hour, starting May 14th, 2018, a temporary seasonal part-time.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have one more from IRVM.
Move to approve Samuel Romig, did I say that right?
Romig.
Romig. IRVM intern, $11 an hour, temporary seasonal part-time, starting May 14th.
I will second it.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the Sheriff's Union Agreement.
I will make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Union Agreement, effective July 1st, 2018, until June 30th, 2019.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second, any discussion?
As stated on the paper.
Yep.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Next item I have is the Secondary Roads Union Agreement.
Move to approve Secondary Roads Union Agreement, as stated.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion?
Presented, excuse me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good, yes, Julie.
I was just, um, heavy equipment operator. Did I see part-time deputy, what did I say? Oh, and they, here we go. Okay, and I was just comparing that salary to this. I've just, thank you.
All in favor of approving the Secondary Roads Union Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is a liquor license application for the Iowa Falls Lodge, number 1331, Loyal.
I will make a motion to approve the, the license application for the Iowa Falls Lodge, number 1331, Loyal. It's a Class A liquor license, outdoor service and Sunday sales.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second, any further discussion?
Effective 5/1 of 18, expires 4/30 of 2018.
Okay. Dave, any issues? All right, thank you. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 23, I'm gonna ask that we table this until we get the final policies and procedures from group services back.
Move to table.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 24, is the Central, Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center Audit. The audit was provided, it'll be on file. I didn't see any abnormalities, looks like policies and procedures are followed, so.
This is, was already approved at the detention board, now it comes back to each member county for their approval as well.
Make a motion to approve the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center Audit.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Other business? Yes, Julie.
Oh, I don't think you said which supervisor or supervisors attended that school safety roundtable. What supervisors did attend?
Just me.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other business? Julie?
Hi.
Other Julie.
Greenbelt Home Care and Harding County Public Health are actually working on our employee emergency preparedness plan for our internal functions, and one thing I need from the supervisors is to have a backup location in the event that our building were not feasible, and we were looking at the EOC as backup building, since it does have Wi-Fi capabilities there, so I was just asking the supervisors today if you were okay with us writing the emergency operations center as our backup location in our, in the event of a disaster or public health office.
I think that's a great idea. I'll throw the butt in there. I would say the commission will need to approve that as well. I don't believe I have any problem.
I don't.
But let's just take it back to that commission on, um, May 22nd, please. But Sheriff McDaniel, please add that to the agenda, and if you'll just put something in writing, we'll have it added on and consider it. Thank you.
I believe that's one of the purposes of the emergency management building.
What was that?
I believe that's one of the purposes of the emergency management building, so I think it'd be appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie. Anything else? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, we'll begin drainage shortly.